...all opportunities to continue to improve the infrastructure in the city. As you know, one of the challenges we have, all electric, old infrastructure, aging infrastructure, so continually upgrading that. We definitely recognize there've been additional outages over the past few months and previously. So what I did is I ran the outage history for the year. And the past, and majority of the outages over the past six months were related to underground cable failure. So the cable failure inside the gates is about, is old. Thirty, forty years old is lifespan, we're approaching that. So we've identified the cable, we're replacing it, but you've probably seen the Sturgeon trucks inside the gates. That's our contractor, that's what they're doing. They're upgrading the cable, changing it out. There was some work that we wanted to do over the summer to replace cable, we pushed it out till the fall because of the hot weather. So some of this could've been avoided if we'd done the work in the summer, but that creates a whole nother issue with outages, residents calling us, residents calling you, so there's really no good time to do the work. We're doing a lot of work now. So there's seven circuits inside Canyon Lake, I think we have around 10,000 customers. We've already completed one of the circuits, could change that, all the cables on the Becker, and we haven't had any issues on that side of the lake. So hopefully, they'll be, Sturgeon will be inside the gates in the next few months working on changing as much as they can. So that's good. We also have another project that we're going to start next year, more trenching, cable replacement, adding some additional above-ground patina, it's like the green boxes you see. We're gonna add some switches inside, inside the gates. So that'll do, when there's an outage, allow our crews, instead of going outside to Railroad Canyon where we have a facility, to switch customers to different circuits, they'll be able to do that inside the gates. So that's, that's gonna start in January, it'll take about two months to complete. That's a million dollar project. So that's approved, we just met with the POA a few weeks ago, so we're moving forward on that. What else? What else? We also have a new substation, transition substation, which is, we're in the process of licensing, which is, we are based in the Temescal Valley off of Temescal Canyon Road and Love Lane, and that'll benefit all of Southwest Riverside, Southwest Riverside County from the Temescal Valley on down. Currently, the substation power is Menifee, is, I'm sorry, Canyon Lake is in Menifee, 74 and Menifee Road, we have a large facility there. So we're splitting the system, writing a new system, so we're able to move load from one to next, improve reliability, gives us more capacity in the event of outages. Because if that substation goes down in Menifee, we have some serious issues all of Southwest Riverside County. So, so that's that. If there is an outage, call us, 800-611-1911, report it. We'll get someone out here right away. You can also download the app for, in front of your phones. It's actually pretty cool, you can go there and look at a map, type in the outage number or zoom in on the map and see what's going on, is it a car hit pole, is it equipment failure? And that's usually updated every thirty to forty-five minutes with an ETA when power will be restored. So I can assure you, we're aware of the problem, we're working on it. We spent a lot of money here over the past few years, on average over a million dollars a year on different projects. If interested, we're happy to take you out and drive you around with some of the projects with some of our operations guys, so you can see what some of the obstacles we're facing. I know I was up here probably three, four years ago at a council meeting and the power was out, and we went out behind the building here, opened up the transformer, and the transformer just shriveled. So, you know, aging of structure, heat conditions, definitely takes a toll. More than happy to answer any questions, you know, please call me if anything comes up, more than happy to see what we can find out for you.
Hi, I'm Donna Esel.
I have a question.
Sure.
One of your representatives several months ago was questioned about Canyon Lake being an all-electric city and the tier levels, and if there was any possible adjustment because of it being, which is typical if you're all electric.
Sure.
I haven't heard anything about that, I was just wondering.
So are you talking about the baseline?
Right.
Yeah, the baseline changed in 2009 as part of the Edison General rate case. I know we worked with WR cog and with the PUC on that, so that went into effect in 2009.
And no more breaks are offered then?
Correct, I would talk, I would call the PUC, talk to them, see if that's something they wanna take up again and, and look at.
Thank you.
Sure.
Just a question, the substation that we have at the golf course, what does that serve?
Most of Canyon Lake.
Okay, is that, is that a supplemental substation to the one in Menifee?
Correct, that's a smaller substation, that's a distribution substation.
Okay.
So the one in Menifee's a transmission substation, so the transmission lines go in there.
And it's distributed down there.
Correct, so lower voltage lines which, which then feeds, feeds the homes, feeds the businesses.
Okay, thank you, sure.
First of all, that app is excellent, so anybody who doesn't have that on their phone, I use it all the time, whenever I get a report that there's an outage, I can send it right back to them and let them know. It's a great thing.
Thank you.
I have a question though, I'm afraid I have a complaint. The roadwork that is left behind after your crews have been here is bad. Pop holes, it's just terrible, there's, it's deep and obvious, it looks as if it was a temporary patch job and we figured you guys would be back in a week or so, nobody's been back. So I can tell you, in the golf cart lane especially, what has to be done, there's work everywhere. Just take a ride with me if you'd like and I can show you.
Sure, is there, yeah, let's do it, if you can get me those locations, I can follow up with our folks. We strive to leave the condition of the road the way we found it. So if you're not happy, let's take a look and see what's going on.
Okay, it hasn't ever been less the way it's found, so whatever your contractors are doing, they're not listening to you, so you just need to know.
Okay, yeah, I, yeah, please let us know, give me locations, more than happy to go take a look with our inspector.
Okay, I'll get those locations for you.
Yeah, just send them over, email, whatever.
All right.
I have one question, and I hope the council can help me on this one. I've been told that we're classified more as a, a city along the ocean, like Orange County, versus the desert, and the classification makes, would be different if we were, look more like a desert.
So actually, 2009, the original base, previous, the previous baseline switched over, so the prior to 2009, Canyon Lake and other cities in Southwest California, County, Riverside County were grouped in with some of the Orange County cities. So the 2009 baseline change is what did it. I actually have a map that I can show you, the previous and the one, and the change, so you can kinda get a good idea as to how the zone will split up.
I'd love to see that, I need to show it to people.
Yeah, I'll get it over to you.
And Jeremy, just to let you know, beginning, you know, 2008, so next year, the city plans on doing a slursome project on Railroad Canyon, it's our five years to do that, so if there's any work that looks like there's gonna be, you know, they need to dig up, dig up some of Railroad Canyon, if they would coordinate with us, our Public Works, because we'll be doing that project, you know, late spring, early summer.
Okay, I'll follow up with our folks on that as well. So, but yeah, I'll definitely get the map over to you next, this week, and, yeah, take a look. Feel free to call me, anything comes up, outages, I think you have all my contact information.
Now that you're back.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thanks.
Okay, now I'm going to 10.2, Stephanie maybe could read it first.
This item is to authorize the city to join California Municipal Finance Authority, CMFA, by approving resolution 2017-18, consenting to the inclusion of properties within the jurisdictional limits of the city of Canyon Lake. And the CMFA Open Pays Program, authorizing CMFA to accept applications from property owners, conduct contractual assessment proceedings, and levy contractual assessments within the city of Canyon Lake, and authorizing the mayor, city manager to sign a JPA agreement with CMFA.
So this presentation, we brought to the council before, I went and met with WR cog, who have, who have administered the base program, and as, I've been made aware through WR cog, PACE is the umbrella program, underneath the PACE is the more, is one of the programs everybody's familiar with, this hero, and a few other ones. I'm talking with WR cog, the group that's requesting this, is energy efficient, what is, they call it E3. WR cog is, is kind of, was kind of working with them, they're not under the same umbrella, they use some other programs, however, it is not contradictory or we're not locked into WR cog, or by allowing E3, we're not phasing out WR cog. PACE allows multiple PACE administrators. So that just, basically just gives the citizens more of a choice when it comes to, basically, this is a financing mechanism, whether, you know, they're paying through it, they're using the, they're using the state and federal grants to reduce the cost, the big thing is, is if they're gonna finance it over time, and how do they do that, whether it's monthly payments, is part of the property tax rolls, so, you know, if somebody wants to, you know, they're gonna be in the house for five years, they want the advantage of solar, but then pass, but not front the whole cost, they pass it on to the next owner, those type of options. And the big financing thing with E3 was the, find, the interest rates, being able to do that. This, this program just gives us another base program to a lot of our citizens, competition to be able to choose the best program that fits their, their financing needs. There's no cost to the city, yes, we've become a member of the JPA, there's no cost, it's kind of, we're kind of middleman that helps sets this up, the CMFA issues the bonds, based on, their revenue bonds are based on them, okay, if somebody goes out and saw it around their house, then that cost would go into the bonds that they would issue, so it's all covered, and there's no cost to the city whatsoever.
Okay, does any council members have any comments?
I think, excuse me, I think Aaron covered all this, really just another option for financing.
Correct.
Under the umbrella of what the hero program has started, people wanna get into the base program, it's really the same thing as, as the hero program.
Well, when I was at the vision conference, when you were on vacation, I talked to Rick Bishop, and he explained to me that there's, there's some, there's some PACE programs that come with under WR cog, and some that don't, and this particular one doesn't come under WR cog. And what he explained, well, yeah.
Well, this is the way I was reading it, this is leftover from about two months ago, when we talked about this on the executive committee. But it says by joining, by joining under WR cog, PACE funding will automatically be able to offer financing for energy efficiency and water conservation retrofits to eligible residential customers in all WR cog member jurisdictions, unless a jurisdiction elects to prohibit PACE funding from operating in their boundaries. So I don't think we could prevent them from operating.
Yeah, and I find that kind of hard to see how we could not allow that since we're a member of WR cog.
Correct.
And they're all, so it makes it kind of hard to do that. Yeah, but it's been my understanding, WR cog kind of sees themselves more as an umbrella clearinghouse and as a consumer protection, they kind of look and make sure everybody dots, dots the I's, crosses the T's, make sure that the, the customer knows what they're getting themselves into.
Yes, this is just some additional competition for financing.
Right, that's what it is.
Okay, there's no, it's been money, right?
No, nothing, nothing else, there's, there's no financial obligation by the city whatsoever. And, and I know Mayor Bonner had a question last time when they came to admin finance committee back in October regarding what happens if nobody wants to pay for it when it comes to the time of selling the property and moving that cost on. There's the disclosure statement, which after meeting with Mayor Bonner, he's very happy with what the disclosure statement has to say, and, you know, like I said, worse comes to worse, the payment will have to, will always be made, because as you know, in any real estate transaction, if they can't agree, then it falls out of escrow, and unless the seller's going to renege on his responsibilities, then he'll continue to make the payment, which includes the financing on the home.
Okay, so do we need a motion?
Motion to authorize the city to join with CMFA under your signature, under.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, discussion with possible correction regarding landscape plan, plan. Usually I end the mayor talk the last, but I'm gonna talk the first this time, because this subject has come up on the finance committee for at least the last two months, if not three or four months. And what, at one point, it was to put 4,100 plants down the Meridian or, on Railroad Canyon Road, and at the finance committee yesterday, for the benefit of the council, I said, we need to stop and assist this thing, and decide from the council what we really want done, and, and give them some direction, because we're not just having the, the cost of the project, or, or Charles Abbott, our employees are spending time in this every month, it goes against with the charges on the length of the bands. So I really would like to have the council get consensus of what we wanna do. What I've heard most common, that to me that makes sense, is maintenance related relative to the, the sound wall, and the new signs that come in, into Canyon Lake, with plants around there, and let's get that done and then move forward, but I, I don't know, that's one person, so now we need to hear the other council.
And there also are some bare spots within the median that haven't been addressed because of this.
Correct.
So like I said, the plan is there, it sounds like, from what I've heard from the council, you know, over the 4,000 plants, you guys, everything, that's, we think that's way too much, what we can come back is we can work for Public Works and our landscape architect, we'll identify the blank spots, there are, there are a few out there, whether or not, you know, we can do, and we can, like I said, we can address this through maintenance, through the budget we can put in, we can put in some rock and brick like we have in some parts of there, some zero escaping, some of the other drought tolerant plants, based on, we can say, what's in the plant, you did a good job updating, looking at plants and doing some things, you're seeing your plan, there's the spreadsheet, the green and blue spreadsheet, where the, we would use some of those plants to fill in the bare spots.
Right.
And so that, that's the idea, we can address this, I know, I think this is.
I think we've spent a lot of time.
I think it's a sore subject now with the council, they just wanted to done it over with.
And the plan's very efficient and very thorough, I gotta give that to you. But looking at the medium, and I, I think Randy and I are, we've gone through this thing about three months, four months now, and, and some items were brought up that do, like we talked about a few of the plants. It was also brought up that the, the purple pipe you see, exposed here and there.
Along the sound wall.
Along the sound wall, that's due to the mulch coming off of it, and the sun can deteriorate. So those are things that I think are appropriate, and then it was also talked about, the entrance sign, there's some areas in both of them that need some attention. But as far as us going back to doing the wholesale landscape, I don't think that that's...
I'm not in favor of that.
I'm a visual person, this doesn't help me. I mean, I see that there, the plans are very well thought out, but this doesn't show me what, what are we looking at now, and what will it look like when all of this glory is done? Perhaps in there, when you talk to them, they can give us an idea of exactly what we're looking at, something a little bit more.
And, and I do think there are a couple of things we wanna make sure. We were having some water issues, the irrigation systems.
That was the big problem.
Which led to some of the plants dying.
Right, so Public Works got that all, so since we were using the pond water, we had some issues, and we found out, we had, we had some major pump maintenance done this year that cost us a little bit. But luckily, we found out it was a pressure issue. Well, if you've ever seen the movie Apollo 13, when they're on the ground trying to do all the switches so they, so they hit that all right, that's what they were doing until we got, with the zones, hitting the right valves at the right time, so once they got that all figured out and the right screens in place, now we should be on regular maintenance, you know, and obviously if something breaks, if a part fails or whatever, but now we've got the water issue solved.
And here's another concern, not a concern, just an observation, this is funded through gas tax, correct?
Yes, is it.
And we have several projects along the boulevard that can be funded with gas tax money, i.e. the fence and some other maintenance items. So I know this is a, a piece of that gas tax, but I think we also have other items that need to be looked at too, so that's just my two cents, because we talked about this extensively in the admin finance.
Actually, if, based on what you were saying that you were visual, we did put together something for you, if you'd like to take a look, and just as an overview, the estimate that you're seeing is based on what was originally approved in 2012, and a lesser amount. So as far as what plants are currently missing with a lesser amount than, you know, okay, there was one plant here, they're not being replaced one for one. So I'm gonna introduce Steve Franken, he's a landscape architect, he put together the proposed plans, and he'll go through this with you, and I would actually like to request that when you drive, it's very easy to drive down Railroad Canyon Road at the speed limit and have blinders on, if maybe you could drive down slower and really take a hard look at it, and then give us input as to what you would like to do.
Good evening, my name is Steve Franken, I'm the landscape architect for Charles Abbott, and I'm your landscape architect. Last summer, we did an inventory of the missing shrubs, and that's what's shown on the plan, and a recommendation of replacement plants that would fill in the voids, so every plant that's itemized on your spreadsheet is filling a space that's existing.
The one that's, the jolly lighting?
Yes.
Yes.
And I made some educated revisions in providing alternate plants that would provide the same design intent of what the original intent was on the plan, but either was larger or more colorful and would survive. In our inventory, finding out which was missing, we found out that a lot of them did not survive or weren't there at all, so we found alternates that would provide the same look, but would be better suited to the planting location.
Well, you know, I'm gonna ask the council, we, we had this to look at beforehand, and do we need to go through this plan one more time, or can we make a decision on what direction we want them to do?
I'm fine with that, if you're asking me.
Yeah, I might as well, I'll tell someone.
No, I don't see you need to go through, you want a plant by plant?
No, I'm fine with that.
Okay. You're fine?
I'm fine.
You're fine? Are you fine?
Yeah, I just think we need to cut down on the number of plants and the expense and get it done.
Well, I think Aaron said it right, let's get the, the sound wall, let's get the, the signs coming into Canyon Lake, let's get the, the blue pipes, and let's get any areas that's, there's no plants at all.
So let me get the council's feeling, how soon would you, I say we could break it up for budgetary purposes, how soon do you want us to get started? So I'm kind of looking at, okay, let's take care of the, the major bear spots in the median first, and we bring that back to mid-year, we can bring, Steve can work up a plan, you know, we've got the plans here, and we'll identify the bare areas and the ones around the monument, come back and say, here's the plan, give you a couple options, we'll bring that to admin and finance first, get them, bring it back to the council, and then ask for, and then ask for that, we'll bring that back at mid-year, and then we can address the sound wall issue in July with budget. Is that acceptable to the council?
Yeah, that's fine.
We can parse it out like that?
I think that, I think we're all faced with the same thing, where we get complaints, with Oddie Murphy coming in and lots of work going on gets, everybody is, is talking about, why can't we look like that? Well, we could, with endless money.
And our plants, and, right, our plants died, these are all new plants, they haven't had the three or four years to grow and get to the size they need to be. And I'm saying probably we push the sound wall off at least until next fiscal year because we have the mulch there, yes, the purple pipe kind of comes up, and, but we can, right, and so we can address that one in the future, but I think, I think they, what I've heard from the councils, the aesthetic we're looking, is we need to address the bare spots in the, in the median first, so we can come back with a plan, and, and we'll do that as part of mid-year, and, and I think that's what the council, council is willing to do, you know, so we'll bring it back to admin and finance, probably we'll come up with a couple of options, plans, and maybe some hardscape in there or whatever, because we do have some hardscape in the medians, and get a look and feel that, you know, that goes with what we have now, that the council will want to see going.
Okay, so if the council is agreeing with the way that Aaron talked about, can I have a motion?
Just one quick question, is there a better time of the year for planting than, are we wasting time?
Fall.
Fall?
Fall.
Okay, well, we missed that window then.
Well, we don't have winter here.
We don't have winter, so we've, we're kind of in fall.
We have some, we have summer and, what, late spring, early fall, that's basically Southern California, right?
Fall and spring is the best time?
Well, I just didn't wanna see the effort go wasted.
Right, no, we don't want to have what we had, yeah, we got the water, but we don't want, you know, weather to kill the plants, and so obviously.
And we also had a problem with the reservoir over there by Country Club, but that's all been taken care of, so there's been a lot of good work done. Okay, is there a motion?
Still no.
Second.
All in favor? Were you spending money?
Yeah.
No, you're not, you're not spending money, you're giving us direction. We'll bring this back at mid-year.
Okay.
So you'll see this in January, early February.
Okay, thank you, all right. Okay, the final is discussion with the US Postal, or name zip code. Again, I've been probably closest to this to anybody, because there's one Menifee citizen that's been trying to get everything that used to be like Romaland and some city, makes it all under Menifee. And there's some enrollment, in Paris, that shouldn't be staying in Paris, and he's recommending that the city, Railroad Canyon should be, 19587. And now the city, city council seems like they're in sync with that photograph, okay? And it turns out, of Menifee, okay? And Karen, maybe you can, they, this should be a city hall, her name, her first name was Sarah? Sarah, Sarah Madwery?
Yeah, that's right, Sarah.
Okay, she wrote a letter in 2009, how we just, what we just talked about, okay? But when the, the official from the postal said, yes, we can go forward with it, but we have to have from each city that's, that's affected, all recover their, their head, saying this is what we wanna do. So we gotta see if the city wants to try to get Canyon Lake to 19587, that's a real question.
Wait a minute, it's to, to do away with the term flow valley and make it Menifee.
That's just gonna be not Canyon Lake.
Yeah, this is not gonna be a Canyon Lake zip code, it's gonna be a Menifee.
Oh, Menifee, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and I mean.
So they're asking for us to go ahead and, and allow that to happen.
I thought, I thought the city of Menifee was, and their council was not in support of that.
They worked at one point.
So they are now.
They seem like they're in sync though.
Have they sent a letter to the post office, what they're asking us to do, right? I'm just asking, I don't know.
I'm not ready to be menified yet.
Maybe I can say to Mr. Mayor, that maybe at your next mayor's meeting, you speak with the mayor of Menifee, and when, if they're ready, have them submit a letter to you and the council, requesting that, and then we can, we can get, help get that going.
Okay, okay. Actually, then I think about it, Aaron, I think that one email that I got that I forwarded, I think to all the council members, is Menifee citizen wants to have Canyon Lake be 19587.
That's why I put your email in, so this says the opposite, so I'm.
Right, and so I think, yeah, if we, I say if we get a formal letter from, from, yeah, from, from the, from Menifee's council requesting our support in this matter, I think that pretty much puts everything to bed, and then we can help, we can set our support for that.
Okay, then do we have to send a letter to the council?
Right, so when, once, I would suggest, when you're talking to Mayor Menifee, that he sends a letter on behalf of the council asking for Canyon Lake support in renaming 52987 to Menifee as opposed to 41.
Okay, so we don't need a more for that?
No, just that, yeah, so I just suggest that next time you have to speak with him, see if they'll be willing to send us, us a letter formally requesting that.
All right, well, now we're the city manager, council.
A couple of things, as you know, it's a mediocre, somehow, I don't know what happened, so he knows it's where, that it's the first Wednesday of the month, and this isn't like the conflict we had before with the POA meeting, so we'll find out what happened there, but it is getting, it is getting recorded, it will go up on the YouTube channel, unfortunately, nobody's made it, we'll see it live. Also, in respect to, with small business, Saturday, November 25th, the day afterwards, the city will be having its Christmas tree lighting at 5:30, 5:30, or at the trees park.
It'll start then, it'll be dark by six.
It should, well, it should, yeah, and we're falling back, right, so.
Oh, yeah, it'll be dark by then.
It'll be, yeah, at 5:30. So, we'll be doing that again at Veterans Park, and that'll be at 5:30 on Saturday, on Saturday, November 25th.
I forget to mention Veterans Day.
And Veterans Day, yes, but I don't want to.
Oh, I was thinking.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll leave Veterans Day to the chairman of the Veterans Committee. Yes, just a quick comment from the council, if I can get your input, obviously with the holidays coming up, we did this last year, so we have committee meetings, January 2nd, which would be the day we come back from break, and then council meeting would be the third. We did this last year, it was the council, we need to push that back a week, so we have admin and finance and public safety on the 9th, the council meeting on the 10th.
I think that's, that's fine with me.
Because, because that's New Year's and sometimes, in case you go out of town or something like that.
So.
And then otherwise, the staff support will put out, we'll have to put out the agenda like about the 20th, so in case the changes come up.
Let me ask you this, we'll still have the council at the first part of December.
Yes.
So when we get to the bottom part, the 27th would be admin and finance and public safety, so we want to take that and push it into.
No, so you'll have admin, you'll have admin and finance on the.
December 27th.
No.
That's what I'm saying, move, taking it out in December.
Well, typically, admin and finance and public safety would be on the 2nd, January 2nd, it wouldn't be the 27th, it's the first, it's the Tuesday right before.
She's in this one, that's what you got marked.
That's 27.
15.
That's why we're wanting to.
That's for this January, not next January, you're closed.
Oh, wait a minute, this, this is December, this is why you got it marked.
That's what he was saying, though, he said, normally it takes place the Wednesday before or Thursday, or Wednesday.
So, probably because of, so, the council meeting is scheduled for January 3rd, so the committee meetings would be January 2nd.
Okay.
Not, not the, not the last week of December.
Okay.
So we'll push those back a week if everybody's fine, we'll do the 9th and the 10th, we'll have the council meeting on the 10th.
Perfect, for me?
Works for you?
For me, yeah.
Okay, great.
Council member comments? Jordan here.
Can I back up for a second, and this maybe should have been addressed earlier, under the check register, what you're talking about, the videographer.
Yes.
I just noticed on the register that Ed Aguirre's price for two months was less than Nate Volk's price for one month.
So I might address that, he's worked out the.
I wasn't going to bring it up, but you.
No, it's okay.
In the contract with, with, oh, good evening, in the contract with Nate Volk, for every 30 minutes that the council meeting goes over, there's a $75 charge. If I recall, that particular charge that we saw from our Nate Volk was because, I can't remember which unit it was, but it went over an hour and a half, so it actually increased that amount to.